Good evening. It's 7:00 PM, Monday evening, March 18th. This is a regular session of Athens City Council. I'm Jeff Reisner. I am President Pro Tem tonight because the President of Council, Sam Crowell, is out of town on other business. First thing to do is to establish a quorum, and I believe all members are present. The disposition amendments of the regular session held March 4, 2024, I'd like to hear a motion to accept.
So move?
Seconded. We have a motion to accept. Shall we have a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. It's been approved. Communications. Does any member of City Council have any communications that they would like to share?
Members, it's down there.
Oh, wait.
Yes, it would be me, way down here. Anyway, so I did get a couple of messages from businesspeople along Union Street regarding the, let's say, one-way traffic and the construction there that is severely impeding their profits right now, and they're hoping for some relief in some way or some strategy, and also they tell me they don't know when it's supposed to be done. So I'm hoping that we can meet with them, talk with, or you can, Mayor, or someone can talk with them about what their options are and maybe discuss the possibility of returning to what we did have was traffic going one way and then letting people go the other way or something. And also, I have seen personally people going the wrong way and weaving in and out of the barriers, so it's an issue.
Member Swain?
I received a similar correspondence and visited three businesses on West Union Street, the Slice House, the Flower Shop, and Larry's Doghouse. And to give you an idea of the magnitude of the problem, not this past Wednesday, but the Wednesday before, Larry's Doghouse had its slowest weenie Wednesday in 25 years. Revenue was off 50%. The Slice House is cutting hours. The Flower Shop fortunately has a lot of phone and internet business and is hoping that their wedding business this summer will carry them through. All three asked, though, for a schedule, if they could get a week-by-week prediction of what the traffic patterns were going to be so they could adjust their staffing accordingly.
Member Clotfelter?
A number of residents of Athens have expressed concern to me about something very related to what Member Speldness was talking about, which is the construction that's going on on West Union Street and on Dairy Lane, both of which go to two of the four polling places in Athens for the community, plus there's Baker Center. The Board of Elections has assured me that they're going to post directional signs to show people kind of the back way to get to each of those two polling places, that being the Dairy Barn on Dairy Lane and Ohio Means Jobs on West Union Street. And so people can access them, they just, like, for West Union Street, you have to take 682 around and then hit Union Street over by White's Mill and then come up. And there are directional signs for the Dairy Barn as well that will be there by tomorrow morning when the polls open at 6:30.
Member McCary?
Thank you, Pro Tem Reisner. I have shared with council members an email regarding an opportunity to participate or attend a webinar by the Strong Cities Network, which has been discussed in recent meetings as a resource that we've partnered with so that we can find strategies to combat polarization, extremism, and hate. The webinar that I emailed council members about just earlier this evening is this Wednesday at 10:00 AM Eastern Time, Global Crises, Local Impacts, Threats to Social Cohesion, and How Cities Can Respond. So council members have those details on how to register, and there will be a briefing on the hate and extremism landscape related to the Israeli-Gaza crises. And if folks are not able to attend that, the Strong Cities Network will be collaborating with the National League of Cities to provide another webinar identified in that email for Wednesday, March 27th, on the leadership mayors and other elected officials can provide in the aftermath of an attack or incident or longer-term support resilience and strengthen social cohesion.
Member Wood?
Yeah, I have also, I have two things to share, or two bins of things to share. One, I don't want to beat a dead horse, everybody's already talked about the Union Street items, and I also received the same emails. I talked to John about his issue, and I also know that Sam, President of Council, shared with the mayor the email, and I know the mayor has taken some action, which is great to hear, and I appreciate that. I think that it's good to hear, and so wanted to thank Sam and the mayor for that as well. And also, I called a friend of mine that works in road construction and spoke to him a little bit, and he said, you know, interestingly, some of these things have been planned years ago, long before some of these businesses might have been there, et cetera. So just some interesting dynamics, but it's good, and I appreciate that the administration has been responsive to that. And secondarily, we've gotten a number of emails about the Bailey Trail System and that issue. They came up last week. We received an email from Dr. Shannon Moore, who is a vet in the area, and Dr. Moore shared her profound desire to see the city of Athens continue to fund ORCA. She said that ORCA has been instrumental in the programs that benefit our community, in fact facilitating economic, social, environmental, and health benefits from our environmental resources, and our community will continue to share, see a great return on investment by continuing to develop those hiking and bicycling and backpacking routes and other means for development. And I think we actually heard from the University today at lunch some of the same things, that they highly encouraged us to invest in those things. So I thought that was interesting. And got a long note from Laura Sowers, who is the owner of the Baileys Lodging Company. She said that it's specifically tailored, a company specifically tailored to visitors on the Baileys Trail Center, and that she is a co-founder of Women Bikers of the Baileys, and wanted to write and encourage us as well to continue our commitment to fund the trail system, to stand by our commitment for that. And she said that, quote, "The Baileys is not just a collection of trails, it's a vision of sustainable, community-connected, world-class recreation that promises significant return." And the economic impact of similar trail systems has been profound, drawing visitors, and that it attracts high-wage employers looking for quality of life. So I won't read the full thing because it's a whole essay, but I think it was very enlightening, again, to hear from somebody that has a business directly based on this thing in our community. And so it's been heartening to hear from a number of community members through email and otherwise that they would like to see us take this action now.
Is that all?
Yes.
All right. Reports and communications from other elected officials? Treasure, is the auditor present? No? Okay. Mr. Mayor, do you have any communications you would care to share?
I do, and I'm going to share from the dais for a change. Do I have to get my name and address?
Yeah, somebody did call.
Before I dive into my report out to council on my recent trip to our partner city over in Ukraine, I want to just echo back to council that I certainly received those emails as well. As a matter of fact, the one that council member Wood is, and several of you have mentioned, I was at the National League of Cities and contacted the most applicable person to make sure that there are immediate corrective actions taken on West Union. I take full responsibility for the mess that is the construction replacing aged infrastructure underground on West Union. You know, for a city that's over 120 years old, it's not an uncommon occurrence for us to have to replace aging infrastructure. I know that there are issues associated with those. We experienced it on Stimson Avenue. We've experienced it on East State Street, Dairy Lane, recognize Dairy Lane as well. But know that, again, I take responsibility when issues like this don't turn out as planned and have made immediate corrective actions to make sure that they are remedied moving forward. And lessons learned with some of the newer administration at Engineering and Public Works, trust me, my message's been delivered, and they understand. I want to share as well, before I dive into this report, that I hope that you find interesting, is that we are, again, recognized as being a Tree City USA here in the city. I just got the letter today. So I'm blanking on how many years it's been going now, 34, 35 years we've been a Tree City USA, but you eat with good people. All right, if you could go ahead and Scott and Ryan tee up the slides so that people can kind of follow along with me, but as a lot of you probably recognize, I did spend eight days in country over in Ukraine. And during that trip, I spent two days in Lviv. Obviously, Lviv is not our sister city, but that was set up through USAID, the U.S. Agency on International Development, and their counterpart in country, which is Avdele, because they wanted me to see some notable entities in Lviv while I was there. And what you see here is Unbroken Rehabilitation Hospital, which was fascinating. Unbroken has become the epicenter for trauma-induced amputations and prosthetics in the country, is the number-one leader in the country. And while there, I was able to engage with the administration, those are the individuals you see in a lot of these pictures, and they are very interested in seeing if they can establish a connection with the Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine, which I have a meeting in early April with Dr. Ken Johnson at HCOM to see if I can't get some relationship going to where possibly having residencies or trainingships or something of that sort for individuals who are interested in this level of trauma emergency medicine. It was a great visit and a great place to engage, begin my trip. Also, while in country or in Lviv, I got to go to the Fields of Mars, which is a UNESCO site. I didn't go look at the historic monuments in UNESCO site, I'm sure they're wonderful. I concentrated my time attending the portion of the cemetery that is for defenders. That's what they call their military members over there, defenders. And in this particular cemetery, which is one of thousands across the nation, there were 600 defenders interned in this site since February 24th of 2022. And you see me placing a bouquet on the most recently interned defender that was in that cemetery, an individual who had just died eight days prior. The other thing that was striking in being over there is that I'm a child, I was a child of the Vietnam conflict, and recognizing that the average age for people, you know, succumbing or fighting over in Vietnam was approximately 19.9 years of age, people serving for 12-month tours. Walking through the cemetery, it was recognizable right away that the average age is somewhere closer to 36 or 38 years of age. There were several markers that I passed by where there were individuals that were my age, I'm 64, who were defenders who were fighting. Unlike the Vietnam conflict, there is no date of separation for the defenders. You're there, and you're there until you're told that you can return. It was, needless to say, it was moving. The photos on the bottom that you see is the Monument to the Heavenly Hundred Heroes. Those are the 107 individuals who lost their lives protesting in Independence Square in Kiev in February of 2014, what's referred to as the initial invasion. The 2022, February 24th invasion, they refer to as the full-scale invasion in Ukraine. These are images of my engagement with the Governor's Cabinet in Rivne. Ostro, our sister city or partner city, is in the Rivne Oblast. The, I had the opportunity to engage with the Governor's Cabinet while there and learned a lot about them. The picture that you see in the lower left-hand corner is me giving them the state of Ohio, obviously, flag, which they were elated to be able to take that and fly that at some point over their state capitol. And what you see in the lower right-hand corner, those are markers in the town square, three-sided markers for defenders that have lost their lives in Rivne alone. Again, wonderful relationship. I just got an email back from the Governor's Office indicating that they wanted to continue a relationship with Athens, much like Ostro is going to continue that relationship. One of the things that'll probably blow your minds about Ostro, I attended one of their city council meetings. I think in some ways, when I first heard the number, that we're fortunate to where there are seven city council members and one president over there, there's 26 council members. But it was impressive to see the decorum and how they were able to get business done while I was sitting in there. I expected to see something different, and that wasn't the case, that they were very orderly and interesting to watch. This is Mayor Yuriy Ahudka, who is my counterpart in Ostro, and this was a moment in which we laid a bouquet of flowers at their monument for those who have died in the full-scale invasion. I also got to visit, while I was in country, in Ostro rather, a volunteer center. They have volunteer centers that are all throughout the nation. This is the volunteer center in Ostro where volunteers spend their time helping build things like, in the lower left-hand corner, camouflage netting for the military members on the front lines, or you see me pouring paraffin wax in what are referred to as trench candles. Again, volunteers coming together, making these trench candles because the defenders are asking for things to keep them warm at night and to light the trenches in which they're fighting from. And in the upper right-hand corner, that was a T-shirt that I had custom-made at Zones to give to those working, spending their hours. The woman that you see in the middle in the upper left-hand corner, she volunteers her time every chance she gets because her husband perished on the front lines as a defender as well. Spent a full day at the Ostro Academy, our OU counterpart in Ostro, and I failed to mention to you, my first experience of being subjected to an air raid siren, air raid alert, was in Rivne to where we had to seek shelter. The second time was when I was prepared to give a group of about 50 students at the Ostro Academy a discussion. We set it up as a lecture. I didn't want to lecture because I'm a foreign professor, instead I wanted just open dialogue. And just as we were getting to roll, the air raid sirens went off, and we had to go into a former crypt, which is what you see in the upper left-hand corner, and had to shelter in place as MiG jets were flying overhead and no one knowing what's going to happen. Luckily, nothing did happen, but it was real when I was there. The other images, I'm not going to get into any detail, but the lower right-hand corner was my engagement with the provost of the Ostro Academy and establishing relationships. One of the individuals you see sitting over on the far right of that lower right-hand corner image was a psychology professor, they're trying to set up a psychology clinic over there. And so as soon as I came back, I was able to establish something between Ohio University Psychology Clinic and the Ostro Academy to where OU is going to help them stand up their own clinic over there. This was probably the most emotional day I had when I was over there, and trust me, I had my own level of vicarious trauma by being in country. This is, was the principals in the upper right-hand corner. This was a lyceum, a grade school, K through 12, over there. I want you guys to make note of what she's holding in her hand. That's a box of chocolates. It's a box of chocolates that was rigged with C8 and blasting caps. Below that is a basketball that was rigged the same way, and over in the lower left-hand corner is a stuffed animal that was filled with C8 and detonating devices. These are what the Russian military are deploying in neighborhoods at nighttime, and then children are coming out and picking these things up and being either severely injured or killed. That was tough to swallow for me, to sit there and see those. Upper left-hand corner was in one of the rooms in the school where it was their culture and heritage room, and they were teaching me basically about their own heritage, things about their daily lives. The young man that you see in the white shirt that's speaking with me was talking to me about embroidered shirts, the embroidery on their clothing. After that visit was over, we left the room and walked out in the hallway, and the teacher leaned over to me, and she said, "I know that that one student, one gentleman, was kind of off a little bit, just, you know, please forgive him, his dad died six days ago on the front lines." This is more on the school. One of the things that was really heartwarming, I know I'm kind of sharing you kind of a real dark side of my experience of there, there was many, many upsides. The little girl in the lower center gave me a painting, which is in my office, she was the sweetest thing, smiling ear to ear, just because she was giving this picture to a mayor. They'd never seen a mayor from the United States before, so even though I don't think so, she thought it was pretty special. The, we also engaged with a forestry class at the school, to which I was able to give them a pound, which is probably the equivalent of about 200 pawpaw seeds, and shared the story of the pawpaw here in the state of Ohio, that it's the state's natural fruit, and gave them the seeds with their forestry group, encouraging them to grow their own grove over there. Yes, those were USDA certified, and I took them over and everything was cool, just in case anybody's worried. This I wanted to show, because part of the mission was to engage businesses and take things from our local businesses over and engage with counterparts over there. Their farmer's market was amazing. I know that we think ours is amazing, and it is. Over there, it's like everything you can imagine, you can purchase their farmer's market, from clothing to car parts to fruits and vegetables and things of that nature. In the upper right-hand corner, in the lower right-hand corner, I got to meet with a company that works with wood products and basically makes school desks and tables and things of that nature. And so one of the things I'd like to do is engage this group with Dr. Tom Gibbs, as they're looking at what they're going to do with the new high school. And then the two images on the left-hand side was an eco-farm and an ecotourism where they're specializing in creating a space for defenders to come and seek respite, as well as mental health care while they're there, and get back to nature and not in places of conflict. The wonderful family to engage with and learn more about what they're doing and sharing what we do here in the city of Athens when it comes to that sector. So a great engagement. This is a wonderful slide. I don't know if council members you had a chance to see this, but that center slide is, again, Mayor Yuriy Ahudka and another mayor from a bordering city, but the stella that they've created, that oblast, which is the city's seal as their sister city, and then they created one of these mileage signposts where you see that Athens is on the bottom of that signpost. I'm pointing in that direction, and basically I told the crowd that it clearly you made the sign so I knew how to get home again. The lower right-hand corner, I experienced three funeral processions while I was in country, and it's moving to see that the city comes to a stop when one of these is rolling through the city. The cars pull over on the side of the road, people get out of their cars, and they take a knee and kneel as the procession runs through the city, as did I when I was over there. The upper right-hand corner, that was pretty special, that was kind of impromptu where I got to visit a brand-new facility for abused women and get to see how that works. That's a six-bed unit and also accommodates children for people that are experiencing physical harm from a spouse or a individual. So to get to see that was, again, moving as well. The last slide I'm showing you is, again, I was there on the 24th of February. It was meaningful, I was purposeful in selecting to be there during that day. That's the two-year mark of their invasion, the initial invasion. And so I attended a rally, basically, and certainly gave some remarks. And among those remarks was that I will do whatever I can to make sure that Congress continues to fund the effort that they're going through. And the lower corner, the lower right or left-hand corner, that's a book, that book is full of defenders from Ostro who have lost their lives defending their country. And then the center slide is a Stewart McDonald, a Stumac ukulele kit that they sent me over with, that I was able to give to Mayor Ahudka, who in turn is going to give that to a group in the music industry in Ostro. But then once that ukulele is made, they're going to give that to the battered woman's home to where they have something that hopefully someone can play it or learn to play it. But totally a moving event. The last thing I want to share with council, and then I'll cede my time, is that while I was there, everybody that I met with, in Lviv, in Ostro, in Rivne, every one of them basically said the same thing to me, that, and that was basically... every one of them basically said the same thing to me, that, and that was basically, "Thank you for the US funding. Thank you for organizations that put together Conex boxes full of medical equipment, you know, bulletproof vests, whatever you sent. It's all been used effectively and with great purpose over there. But Mayor, please make sure the message goes back to, up to Capitol Hill, that the continued funding is absolutely necessary. As they're rationing ammunition on the front line, you know, it by default makes every defender have to become a sharpshooter or a sniper, to where they're effectively doing what they need to do, given what they're having to deal with. During the National League of Cities Conference, I had the opportunity to spend 30 minutes with our Congressman Troy Balderson. The story I told you, I shared with him in clipnot version for time. And he heard it loud and clear, what is needed over there, the continued funding. I got three minutes with President Biden. And trust me, you, I said the same thing to President Biden. And he had some really nice things to say privately in my ear, which I cannot repeat on TV. So, but he understands and he knows what needs to be done over there as well. And so I've conveyed that with Capitol Hill. I've shared that with Senator Sherrod Brown. As a matter of fact, I was texting Sherrod Brown when I was in country and he had some really nice things to say as well, like he's proud that I was there. Please hurry back. I need you in Ohio. So that all said, I'm open to taking any questions from council on my report. Councilmember Spillness?
Yeah, thank you. I was texting with a friend of mine who lives in Kyiv, who works for the UN. And he has told me twice that over the last month or so, that they are really concerned that the way things are going, we're going to have World War III over there. It's really, they're really scared. And also that Kyiv has been protected because of their anti-missile equipment and because of the shortage of monies from the US, they are at greater risk in Kyiv because of that. So I'm, you know, very concerned and alarmed for him and his family and everybody else over there. So, thank you for advocating for them.
Member McCarrick?
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reisner, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your report. I have a quick question followed by maybe a longer one. The quick one is that I heard you use the phrase "in country" a few times, and I was hoping you might explain what that means. I assume it means in the country of Ukraine. But then also, how has this experience shaped your thoughts about our city's engagement in international issues?
I'm going to speak to Ukraine on that topic, and Ukraine alone. We have a, what I presented to all of council before the meeting tonight is basically the contract between Ostro-Ukraine and the city of Athens, Ohio. You're correct. When I say "in country," I was talking about being in Ukraine. I flew into Krakow and then had security detail take me into country, into Ukraine, and to Lviv, and then on to Rivne and Ostro, and then back again. It's really sealed my resolve to continue this relationship and to build out connections between our partner city, Ostro. Soon as I came back, I was hard at work engaging with Dr. Tom Gibbs, with the school district. I happened to have parent-teacher conference two days later and with my own daughter's class. I'm told, the teachers were asking, "So you just came back? How was that?" And I told them and I said, "I would like to establish a pen pal program, if possible, with your classroom," to which they're at work doing that. You know, I mentioned businesses, engaging with the businesses that I experienced over there, will continue to do that. One of the things they found to be fascinating is the idea and the concept of Home Rule. It blew their minds. They're like, "Home Rule? What is this Home Rule thing?" You know, because if you think about it, they're still operating in a lot of cases under the remnants of the USSR, the Soviet Union, to where everything was centralized. They are decentralized, but that was a real interesting concept to them. And they want to continue to learn from us, is that how do you manage Home Rule? How does that work with Home Rule? I mentioned issue one. I mentioned issue one and issue two, to which they were fascinated by that as well. So I plan to continue to engage with their government. I'm hopeful that council will engage with their council as well. I know that that's like four to one, but I think that you guys can manage that. I've been working with the university, as I have already indicated, and having, building out relationships. I certainly briefed President Laurie Stuart Gonzalez upon my return and things that we will hopefully be doing moving forward as partners and partnering with the Ostro Academy and Ostro-Ukraine. I don't know if that answers your question fully, but you asked about international, but again, I'm speaking with the voice of Ukraine because that's the partnership that we already have in the document sitting right before you.
Other questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving right along. No other officials. Oh, I forgot to ask the law director, do you have anything to report? Okay. You're so quiet. Let's move on to ordinances for a third reading. The third reading ordinances are the ones that we will, that'll be read and we will vote on. So Ordinance 1224, an ordinance conveying city-owned property located at 83 Columbus Road to the Athens Community Improvement Corporation, ACIC, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
I'll just read the first whereas, because we've talked about this in detail. Just recap, the property at 83 Columbus Road is that vacant property next to Curtis Towing across from Bickle Insurance. It's been sitting that way for quite some time. Environmental concerns have been remediated. And the whereas is simply this, whereas the CIC can offer economic development options that might not otherwise be possible, should this property remain municipally owned, be ordained by the city of, the Council of the City of Athens, that we will convey this to the CIC, as the mayor said earlier, about economic development and business possibilities he explored in Ukraine. This is an opportunity here, local, to do the same. And it's a lot easier if this land is in the hands of the CIC. So I would move that we pass Ordinance 1224.
Any discussion? Administration, anything to say about it? Audience? We've had a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. It's been passed. Ordinance 20-24, an ordinance accepting permanent bike path and utility right-of-way easements from the Athens County Public Libraries, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
2024 deals with granting easements from the library over and across the bike path, should the city need to do utility work or bike path improvement work. The library director and staff have signed off on this. It's just now a matter of council passing an ordinance this evening, granting that permanent easement. I would move that we pass 2024.
We've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Administration? Audience? Very well. All those in favor of passing 2024, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. It's passed. And let's see. Ordinances for a second reading. Have to call it up here on the computer. Here we go. An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into contracts for construction and construction engineering of the city sewer system improvement project number 330, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. I understand this ordinance requires a suspension of the rules, and for what reason?
The timing of getting this thing rolling.
Okay. I'd like to, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules for 1024. We have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion about suspension of the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. It's passed. The rules are suspended. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Ordinance 1024. We have a second?
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion about this project? Administration? Okay. If required, I can read a couple of the sections here, if anyone wants to hear it. Section 1, the 2024 appropriation ordinance, ordinance 130-23, is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriate balance the sum of $2,107,350 to Sewer Fund Plant 750.637, transaction code 500, and increase in the appropriations by said amount. The service safety director is hereby authorized to expend up to $2,107,350 from Sewer Fund Plant 750, transaction code 500, for said project number 330. So we can vote now? All those in favor of adopting Ordinance 1024, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Ordinance has been approved. Ordinance 2424, an ordinance approving the unnamed right-of-way of Herald Avenue to be named Davison Court, introduced by Councilmember Swank.
Now that we have renamed that section of road on the far west side, so that our 911 emergency crews, our first responders and all that, heaven forbid, but should they need to go to a location, we need to pass this as soon as possible. And I'm going to suggest that we suspend the rules per the request of Director Stone.
Is that a motion?
Aye, so move.
Seconded.
Seconded. For matters of public safety?
Yes, because right now, if you, you know, if someone were to call from 911, they're not exactly sure where to go. They'll be in the neighborhood. But in the neighborhood, in case of emergency, isn't quite good enough. So this pinpoints it to the spot on the map. And that's the purpose for the safety of the citizens of Athens, the property and any individuals residing or working in that area.
We've had a motion to suspend the rules. It's been seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Yes, the rules have been suspended. Member Swank?
I would move that we pass 2024, an ordinance approving the unnamed right-of-way of Herald Avenue to be named Davison Court.
Discussion? Administration? Audience? We've had a motion and a second to adopt 2024. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Ayes have it. 2024 has been adopted. Ordinance 25-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 62-23, authorizing preliminary engineering services for the state Route 682-56 intersection improvement project number 357, introduced by Councilmember Spillness.
Yes, as we've discussed in committee and in first reading, there is an additional amounts of money, once the, once we've learned more about what needed to be done, that is required in order to make, allow for the money for engineering services. So initially, it was $1,395,589. And the construction cost estimate after the completed stage one design is 3.5 million. So the city administration is wanting a design firm to expand the project's scope to include selected improvements north of Route 682. So this is just more money for a project that I think needs to be done.
Thank you.
But I do have a quick question, so if I could ask the mayor for a quick question. Okay, so we have some plans in place for this, but I'm assuming that those are preliminary until the design firm has looked at it more thoroughly, because there are some issues with the design. And I'm wondering if, that those are obviously not locked in stone, but I just want to confirm that.
That's accurate. The, again, as the name implies, so this is for the detailed preliminary designs as they dive into this. You're correct in that the earlier designs were just preliminary designs scoping out where this would go, what it may look like, but certainly not the detailed designs. So there's going to be a lot more coming in terms of design. I will share with council as well that we just identified funding to, now just know this is potentially, you know, looking at what's called a pedestrian flyover, we engaged with an organization that represents the rail industry, because we have down in that area, the rail crossing, the grade crossing. And we know that, you know, for safe pedestrian passage on the north side of that, you know, would require some really interesting finessing. But there is grant funding out there. Now that we could potentially continue to look to see, is it worth, and would we be successful in applying for a pedestrian flyover? It's basically a bridge, you know, a pedestrian bridge that's ADA accessible, which is going to have its own set of challenges to do. But it's certainly something that we're going to explore to go along with. So I guess, Councilmember Spillness, the short answer to your question is, yes, these are preliminary. We're still looking for other sources of funding to grow out the scope of this project.
Thank you. Good to hear.
Oh, member Wood?
Given that we're all getting a education on the impact of traffic in businesses, and this is certainly in a spot that will hit that, it might be prudent to ask at this point, you know, that the administration also include that some sort of traffic impact or other mitigation that we can do. Is that already planned, maybe? Or can we add that?
It's in the plans as it stands right now, you know, lessons learned, not of late. But with the previous larger roundabouts, Richmond Avenue, 682 roundabout, you know, it was built in phases to where we were able to continue to have traffic flowing on that particular project. Plus, that was a bridge deck repair, so it was even more complicated. But also the Stimson Avenue roundabout, to where there was always flow of traffic either, you know, on either sides of the roundabout. This will be planned the same way. We're certainly aware of that because of the fact that Obolinas Hospital is right there on West Union. And what will that look like, not just for people trying to get to the hospital, who are patients, but also physicians trying to get there. So we are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ordinance 26-24, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 17, Municipal Income Tax, Chapter 17.01 in general, Section 17.01.011B, Authority to Levy Tax, and 17.01.012, Purposes of Tax Rate, and Chapter 17.01.09, Annual Return, Section 17.01.091A1, Return and Payment of Tax, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 27-24, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinances for second, for first reading, I believe we have one that needs to be suspended also. The first one is 28-24, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, and authorizing an inter-fund authorizing an inter-fund transfer. Allow me to read it for the first time? Be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $100,000 to General Fund 101, transaction code 300, for payment of 2024 Bureau of Workman's Compensation, BWC invoices. Section 2, the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23, is further amended by decreasing ARPA, ARPA funds 2886, or 286, transaction code 500, by $140,000, and increasing ARPA Fund 286, transaction code 600, for transfer by same amount, and increasing and decreasing said appropriations by said amount. Section 3, the auditor is hereby authorized to make the following inter-fund transfer from ARPA Fund 286 to ACIC Fund 906, amount $160,432.70. Section 4, this ordinance shall be in effect in full force upon passage and approval by the mayor. Any discussion? It's first read. Administration, anything? No? Very well. Ordinance 29-24, an ordinance approving a then and now certificate for payment to BIS Digital and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Or suspend? I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for 29-24.
Second.
Reason for the suspension is this is a long overdue bill, payment to this company, and it needs to be paid right now. So, let's get the ball rolling. So we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Rules have been suspended. I would like to make a motion that we adopt 24, or 29-24.
Second.
Allow me to read it. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, a then and now certificate in the amount of $3,358 to BIS Digital for a digital recording system maintenance contract is hereby approved for payment. Section 2, the ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the health, welfare, and safety of the residents of the city of Athens, Ohio, in order to maintain fiscal integrity, and shall be in full force in effect upon its passage and approval by the mayor. So we've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anyone from the tactical department? Okay. Audience? All those in favor of approving 29-24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. It's been approved. Ordinance 30-24, an ordinance amending ordinance 65-23, authorizing engineering services for rehabilitation of the Stimson Avenue Bridge Project Number 358, introduced by Councilmember Spielness.
Okay. This is yet another project in the city to improve our city in many ways. So this is, has more than was originally planned for, again. So it reads, whereas the city was awarded $3,292,795 from ODOT, local major bridge program funds to rehabilitate the Stimson Avenue Bridge, and, and this is the addition, whereas after a more detailed review of the costs involved, things go up, folks, I'm sorry to say. The city has been awarded an additional $1,422,590 from ODOT, and this is the original still. Whereas, said rehabilitation includes a new concrete deck, approach slab replacement, rocker replacement, steel painting, and street lighting improvement. So it will look nicer, be safer, and it's important to maintain and upgrade bridges and infrastructure rather than letting it deteriorate to the point where it costs a lot more and is a lot more dangerous. So it's the right thing to do. Be it ordained by council of the city of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, the 2024 appropriation ordinance 130-23 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the sum of $130,000 to Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500, and increasing the total appropriations by said amount. Here's the new part, Section 2. Section 3 of ordinance 65-23 is hereby amended to read as follows. Section 3, the Service Safety Director is further authorized to expend up to $580,000 from Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500, for said project 358. So it will be an improvement, and as we've discussed before, we're going to make every attempt possible to not interfere with business and traffic.
Thank you. Administration, anything to say about it?
You know, that, that bridge, quite honestly, council, there's always been this issue of who owns what portion of the bridge and so on and so forth, but, you know, with these two grants or these two, these two tranches of funding, it will cover the entire bridge. We're not going to just do half of it. It'll cover the entire bridge. It will include a sidewalk, a pedestrian passageway. There'll be many improvements that you'll see to that bridge as it becomes, and it truly is, you know, it's one of the most notable entrance, you know, gateways into the city of Athens. And I wish, I wish I could promise all of you on council that there will be no more improvements on Stimson Avenue, at least with the public right-of-way, because we've invested a lot of money into the Stimson Avenue corridor, so I don't foresee anything for years and years and years to come, so.
We hope. Any other discussion? Members of the audience? No? Very well. Thanks for the first read. Next, we have a one-reading resolution. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 03-24.
Second.
Before we vote, I'd like to read it one more time, so let's refresh our memories. A resolution requesting all elected officials institute a hiring freeze for positions funded by the city's general fund until a position review has taken place. Whereas, to prevent our general fund balance from dropping below our cash balance policy minimum, vacant positions in the general fund should be carefully reviewed prior to filling in order to alleviate any need for a reduction in force, while at the same time recognizing that some vacant positions will by necessity be advertised and filled. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio, Section 1, city council hereby requests all elected officials institute a hiring freeze for positions funded by the city's general fund until a position review has taken place. This policy shall remain in effect until December 31, 2024. So we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion after being read? Member Swank?
Question. Having been through a similar situation twice back in the early 1980s, the position review, and this is directed to the administration because this is solely administrative function, the position review, will that be for all positions funded by the general fund or just those that are vacant at this current time, or those where we have a turnover in the next X number of months? Or all? I'm just curious, because it's a laborious process to do it correctly.
It'll, it'll be all. It'll be all. It's a soft hiring freeze. There will be, I, I've mentioned this at the mayor auditor meeting, where I meet with Auditor Hect every week, and what we've decided, and it was by my request, that that review is, will be conducted by someone from the auditor's office, likely the president of city council, myself, and Service Safety Director as we go through and review them. But, you know, again, if, and I'll throw a hypothetical out there, and know that it's just a hypothetical, but, you know, if for whatever reason I were to lose one of my directors for any department, you know, that would constitute a really quick meeting, that we need to have someone who's replacing that individual because of that level of loss. But we'll review other positions as well. So it's, it's going to be, it'll be a process. It'll be a lot of work, but it's my job.
Thank you. Any other questions from council before we vote on this resolution? Member McCary?
Thank you, Pro Tim Reisner. I am looking for clarification on the policy remaining in effect until December 31, 2024. Will that change if the position review is completed before that, say in October 2024? It's a matter of interpretation of this language here about the policy remaining in effect until December 31st. I'm not sure if that's a legal question? Or mayor?
No. No, so there's not going to be like one process that takes place. I mean, if we find that the revenue is not what we anticipated it being, you know, all the way up to the end of the year, then it'll stay into effect till the end of the year. If we, if we see in the October timeframe, which is when we see another tranche of, of income tax coming in, you know, it could potentially go in the other direction to where we sit there and look at it and go, do we, can, do we need to have this still in force at this point in time? So, council, I could be coming to you with just the opposite request, you know, with, again, working closely with the treasurer and with the auditor and say, things are improving, and therefore, do we need to continue to have this in force? So.
Thank you. Think, then, I wonder if that last sentence in Section 1, this policy shall remain in effect until December 31, 2024, is there's some caveat to that? Or until, or is it just a matter of council needing to take action in order to change that deadline? Or that?
Yeah.
The latter?
Okay.
That's our budget year.
Yeah. Fiscal year. Thank you. Any other remarks, questions? Before we vote? Okay, I'd like to take a vote on this. All those in favor of Resolution 03.24 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Now we get to announcements and other businesses, business. I'd like to hear a motion to accept the auditor's February 2024 financial reports.
So moved.
We have a second? All those in favor of accepting the reports signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. It's been passed. Well, next is a motion to accept December 2023 and February 2024 credit card transactions. We have a motion to accept.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor of accepting the reports for December and February signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. It's been passed. Next is to confirm the mayor's appointment with the Athens City County Board of Health. I'll turn to member McCary.
Thank you, President Pro Tim Reisner. I received a indication that we have a recommendation to appoint Dr. Anu Gupta to the Athens City County Board of Health, and that recommendation comes from our mayor. Do we have any comments?
Do I have that wrong?
Yeah. Member Claude Felder?
I would guess one clarification question. Is Dr. Anu Gupta the one who wrote the book Being Mortal?
No, it's a...
And is he a bestselling author?
No.
No. Okay. Well, I know that the Gupta family has outstanding medical professionals in it, so, excellent.
I was wondering the same thing.
Okay, thank you.
I'm glad you asked the question.
Athens high grad.
You would know.
Had some good ones in that period. Maya Lynn, too.
So do we have a motion then?
I would move that we accept the appointment of Dr. Anu Gupta to the Athens City County Board of Health.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor of the appointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It's confirmed. Appointments to the Affordability Housing Commission. Well, let's see. Who do we have?
Me.
We have Mary Abel, who's been nominated. Mary has served three terms as our state representative and has served in multiple ways in Athens for decades. She also regularly attends AHC meetings, so is very knowledgeable about housing issues and the functioning of the commission. Then we have Amy Lipka. Amy has lived in Athens for 26 years and hopes to remain here for many years to come. She is currently the coordinator for Age Friendly Athens County at the Athens City County Health Department. Age Friendly Athens County AFAC is a community initiative to make Athens both city and county more welcoming and livable for people of all ages. As a member of the Affordable Housing Commission, she hopes to amplify the unique perspectives and insights that older adults offer when it comes to affordable housing in Athens. So, do we have a motion to accept these appointments?
So moved.
Oh, Solvi, okay.
Okay, so I just wanted to comment that I am at least the interim chair of the Affordable Housing Commission, and the Housing Commission members specifically asked that we ask these two individuals to join the commission, and so I reached out to them, and they're both here. Thank you very much for coming. So they're both eager to get started. We've got a couple of other new members with, there's a required member, basically, with the mayor, and also the new planner. Can I mention this, mayor? It's okay. Megan Jennings, she's our new planner, so we're happy to have her start again. We're, as you know, at a loss with our, the loss of our city planner, and so now that Megan has started, she's going to be doing this amongst a lot of other things. So we're having a full contingent, we will now have a full contingent of members again, and we hope to get a lot done as we haven't really had a chance to for a bit. So I hope that you will all vote these two in, and we're very excited to move forward, and thank you for being here.
Member Swank?
To further amplify what Solvi said today, council had lunch with the president of Ohio University, and one of the questions that was posed of the president was concerning bringing people to Athens, both students and faculty and staff. And it was very, very clearly articulated, one of the leading things that we need to work on is affordable housing in all income categories. Dr. Gonzalez made that very, very clear, as did the director of admissions. So I'm looking at these two names, these two people, no offense to anybody that we have voted on, but these are two of the finer appointments I think we've had in a very, very long time to any of our boards and commissions, and I would enthusiastically vote yes on both.
Well said. Anyone else? Both up and down? Members of the audience? Okay, we've had a motion and a second for these appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Looks like you two are stuck. Okay, next we have opportunities for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered by the agenda. If anyone chooses to speak along these lines, they'll have three minutes, and please give your name, your address, and if you represent a group, I think there's a sheet up there, please sure, be sure to do that. I was severely reprimanded by... I was severely reprimanded by a constituent concerning this the last time. So anyone care to speak? First come, first served, whoever can make it first.
Hello, everyone. I'm just going to write this down and then I'll start talking.
Okay. Oh, he won't start the buzzer until.
I appreciate it. Okay. Hello, my name is Catherine. I live on Congress Street, and I am here just representing myself. So I have some questions in regards to the Rumpke AHRC bill that I spoke to some council members on last year. So just in terms of this, we need a city administrator volunteer to represent the city of Athens. Is there anyone willing to volunteer or step up to have this position to represent the city on the council of governments? So this would mean that you would have a say in prices for hauling, waste, labor, and purchase of equipment through the COG. Does anyone want to step up to say that they would be committed to doing this?
Our rules are that you can speak, but we don't answer questions. We listen.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. And then in terms of the processing of like how city council works, when adding agenda items to be in conversation during the meetings, how do those get brought onto the agenda? Is that something I'm allowed to ask? And if not, can I have, can I have follow-up contact information with the representative that I'd be able to speak to about?
Absolutely.
That? Okay. And can I get that now or after the meeting?
After the meeting.
And who shall I speak to?
Him.
Okay, well, thank you. My other questions are not able to be answered, so I will not waste my time or your time, but thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Next. Name, address, et cetera.
I'll fill this out in just a second. When I'm done, keep it rolling. My name is John Wood. I'm a resident of Amesville, but I pay taxes in the city as a member of the Athens Farmers' Market and a employee of the university. I want to talk to you today briefly about the Bailey's Trail system. And first I want to thank you for your support up to this point, that project. It means a lot to those of us who ride those trails. I know there's a number of people here who are riders who maybe don't want to speak, but if you came to support the Bailey's, if you could put your hand up, that'd be great. I understand that the city's in a budget crunch at the moment, but I hope that you can also look to the Bailey's to keep you out of the next budget problem. I spend most of my time as a graduate student at Ohio University studying the recreation economy and specifically the Bailey's. If you haven't had a chance to read the Bailey's feasibility report published in 2018 by Quantified Ventures, you may have read that, and it said that over a 10-year period, the Bailey's is projected to produce $7 million in tax revenue, $20 million in funding, and $6.9 million in increased wages. The draft economic impact study, which was cited to you by Jesse Powers, says that we've already generated $3.5 million in the very first year of the trails being open, when only 11 miles were open. So already this trail system is overperforming. But there's another part of that feasibility report that I think is really telling. It's a great graph on page 44 that demonstrates how those projections play out with each different scenario with the visitation numbers and the quality of trails. While every single scenario shows the trails breaking even, if we invest now and make sure that this trail system gets up to being at what's considered a world-class level with, they're projecting 180,000 visitors a year, it shows like five times as much tax revenue, and it pays itself off faster. I know that there were some questions raised about the validity of the economic impact study. While it's a draft study, I have read it a few times. It's 50 pages, it's pretty thick. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to comment on what's in it because it's draft. However, it was authored by a city employee, Catherine Jordan, Dr. Jordan, who now heads the Arts Park and Recreation Department, and I would encourage you to speak to her about it. You know, I used to live in Moab and work in Moab and in Asheville, and both of those places, we all know, are huge recreation economies. But both of those places, not that long ago, were distressed communities that were recovering from the departure of economic, extractive industries. We can do it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name, address?
Yep. So my name is Shannon Pry Harrington, 6539 Hudnall Road, and I'm here representing Zero Waste Event Productions. I can guess what I'm up here talking about. So you don't know what we do. Zero Waste Event Productions is a local business, and we do recycling and composting at music festivals and events. We started out at Nelsonville Music Festival. We've done Pop Off Festival. I've done it personally for eight years. And I know this is a little too late to be having this conversation, but we work out of state a lot of times. We've brought hundreds of thousands of dollars into this community. Two of my business partners are from, one is from Kentucky and one's from North Carolina, have moved to this region because we are a destination for waste aversion and zero waste products companies, and it's built on the back of the recycling, the recycling building and the compost facility. I'm really here to talk about compost today because over the weekend I was at the Cincinnati Mini Marathon. We collected about 400 pounds of banana peels, apples, and there's not a facility in that region that takes this material. That's not the only event we do during the year. Where the only outlet we have for that material is our local compost facility. We took 11,000 pounds of material from events all over the East Coast. We work in 11 states. We did 38 events last year. We brought 11,000 pounds of compost into our community. It's because we have that as a resource. That resource is being threatened right now. My ability to do my job is being threatened. My ability to keep, I think we have 15 local people hired at the moment. There are five business partners. We have one manager working for us full-time. We built ourselves because we had the Athens Talking Recycling Center, because we had the local compost facility. Pop Off Fest over its years has diverted 20,000 pounds of compost. Nelsonville Music Fest, my statistics are a little less certain, but it's like 35,000 pounds. I guess what I'm saying is I'm really scared about the future of the compost facility, and I think there's still time to do something, and I would hope that you guys still have your ears on the ground on ways to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have a motion?
Hi, my name is.
Sorry, I thought you were going to continue without giving me your name.
Yeah. I was saying, hold on. My name is Mike Walton. I live at 20 Graham Drive in Athens. I live here in the area, but I'm a regional sales manager for my company. I come from West Virginia to the Dakotas, and I travel a lot with my job, and as such, I, I see a lot of different parts of the country. I am a mountain biker. I'm also a trail runner, hiker, et cetera, but mountain biking is a little bit my passion. Tomorrow, I'm driving to Grand Rapids to, to a conference. On the way, I'm going to stop in Little Town in Chelsea with Michigan that's out of my way, and I'm going there because they have a great mountain biking trail, DTE. And while I'm there, I'm going to probably get gas. I'll definitely get Gatorade and Powerade or whatever, some snacks for my ride. And when I'm done, I'll end up eating, eating dinner, spending $20, $25, whatever, at a restaurant there. I travel a lot around the country. He mentioned Moab. I go to Moab every year. I go to Crested Butte, Colorado every year. I go to those places only to mountain bike, and it's, it's recreation, yes, but I look at this, the Bailey's Trail system is what I'm coming at here. I look at this not as a recreational thing. Sure, it has some recreational qualities and benefits for this community, but I look at it as an economic development thing for this community. And when, when I go to places like Moab and Crested Butte, Colorado, there are people like me coming from all around the country, literally all around the world, spending thousands of dollars. Don't tell my, I hope my wife's not listening right now, but you know, it's not unusual for me to go to, to Moab or Crested Butte for a week and spend, you know, four, five, $6,000 on, on bike rentals and hotels and food and things like that, airfare, whatnot. So I am a big proponent of what's happening at the Bailey's. One last thing, anybody knows me knows that I talk to everybody. Somebody ought to spend a Saturday with me during the biking season up at Bailey's and just hang out with me and see all the people I talk to on the trails. It's stunning and shocking how many people come here from not just the Columbus, Dayton, Marietta area, but from multiple states. I have two groups from Michigan and a group from Wisconsin who now come down regularly. These are six, eight, 10 guys that come down from Michigan. They come down for four or five days to mountain bike, and they spend a lot of money when they're here. And I also know many people locally who are people who've moved to the area because of the trails. So big advocate for the trails. Anybody wants more insight from a real active, very active user, I'm there every day. I was here late because I was mountain biking at Bailey's a few minutes ago. One of the authorized winter monitors over there. So I'd be happy to share any more insight about it, the Bailey's Trails specifically, but in general about economic development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean O'Malley, 4724 Angel Ridge. It's outside of the city limits. I do own a property in the city, so I do pay taxes here. I also would like to speak about the Bailey's. I would echo Mike's experience. When I travel, whether it's for business or visiting family, if I know about a cool destination, a whitewater river or a mountain bike trail, I will go out of my way to stop there. A lot of what you've been hearing is like, hey, the Bailey's are, they're overperforming already. They're great. People have to know about them. You got to fund it to be able to promote it. If I don't know about something, I can't stop there and spend the money stopping at a group of or something after I ride or going and having dinner or staying overnight somewhere. So think about that. It isn't just that, it's not just if you build it, they will come. You got to build it and you got to promote it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Thomas, 28 Avon Place. I wasn't even going to speak tonight. I just wanted to show up. But I was here at the end of the year during the last council meeting discussing sustainability for Athens and everything else we got going on far as the business community here in Athens. I came here as a student in 97, graduated in 2001, started my first business here in 2003. Athens has, I won't say never, but has never been a very business-friendly community till over the last few years. And what I'm here to talk about is a conversation I had just morning. And like I said, I wasn't on the planet. I love sending you all emails. I enjoy watching you on Facebook every week. But today, you know, I woke up with a sinus infection and I had to go to the express care. My insurance sends me to Marietta because that's the network, so I go to Marietta to the express care. I'm sitting there and the nurse says, oh, you're from Athens. Say yes. She said, yeah, I stopped shopping there because of the plastic bag ban. Right? Now, this is, I got recyclable bags in my car. It, it doesn't bother me. I'm used to it. I've been cities. You got to have recyclable bags. Was in Hawaii, they charge you 15 cent per bag if you don't have a bag. I traveled across the country, across the world. I've seen it. I know how it works. It's fine. But to hear this one person who lives between Marietta and Athens says she stopped coming to Athens to shop, kind of resonated here as a business owner, because how many other people have felt that? And my thing is this, listening to everything tonight with all the money going to the Simpson Avenue project, all the construction on Union, everything is going on to make Athens better. What are we doing to keep businesses here or attracting business to our area? I mean, for the people who haven't been in Athens as long as I have, we almost lost a lot of business due to the laws for trees. My buddy used to own a McDonald's here in town, all four of them. He did a project 10 years ago on Ritzland when he tore it down, rebuilt it. He was required to pay an over $10,000 worth of trees for the project. Texas Row House almost left Athens because they were required to have X amount of trees. Tim Hortons was delayed because they have X amount of trees. Menards was delayed because of X amount of trees, bike racks, and parking. We sit here and say we want to keep people here. We want to attract more business in town. We're working on the vape ban, tobacco ban, because we want to have more diverse businesses in Athens. But here we are, if you want to put a sign up on East State Street, you got to get three weeks of readings at city council to get approval for your sign. My thing is this, as the city council, what are we doing as a city to attract more businesses in town? And I will leave you all on this. Four years ago today, Ohio University told 10,000 students, don't come back. How much money did we lose? What have we done to fix that?
Anyone else? In that case, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn for this evening. Oh, mayor? Just in time.
I just wanted to make a point of clarification for council as well as those who are here who spoke to the Bailey's Trail system. In 2023, so last year, when I was working through the budget for the city of Athens, $90,000 was budgeted and approved by council to be in place for our membership with the Bailey's Trail system. So just know that. I want this group to know that that was budgeted and is still in its placeholder for that membership. The other thing that's a good reminder for council is when we started looking at this in 2017, as we were looking at the pay-for-success model, which was a whole different model than the model that we have now, the intent for us to be a payer was to use our transient guest tax where that money ultimately migrates into the general fund. But during that process, that's money that's coming from people's, you know, heads and beds. It's people who are staying in the hotels, and it was the most appropriate, in my opinion, and council at the time, along with our auditor, to sit there and, and have that become our pay-for-success funding stream. We're seeing full hotels more and more now that were post-COVID. We have a new hotel in the city of Athens. I just had a phone call with developers who want to develop extended stay hotels here on East State Street. We'll see how that plays out. But, you know, I just want those who spoke tonight to recognize that it was budgeted, it was in my budget, but also council as a reminder that the, the transient guest tax, the hotel tax, which brings in somewhere in totality, somewhere around $460,000, that's a pre-COVID number. We have the addition of a new hotel. We certainly see a lot more short-term rentals that are out there. Those two are taxable entities when it comes to the transient guest tax, but half of that has to go by statute, and I'll rise code to the Convention and Visitors Bureau or Tourism Bureau. The other half, the city retains. And so council, just be mindful of that. And again, those of you who are here speaking about it know that I budgeted for that membership, much like I budget for our, our membership with the Athens County Economic Development Council and other organizations that we paid to be members of.
Thank you. Where were we with the motion?
So moved. Seconded.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. We're adjourned at 8:25.